Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. We appreciate your presence and to be part of the process. For the record, today is October 16th, 2024, and the time is 6:30 PM. I'll begin with the roll call. So, council, when I call your name, please say here or present. Mayor Maxton?
Here.
Councilmember Stroop?
Here.
Roden is not present. Ruben Alvera?
Here.
Dale Pearson?
Here.
Scott Parker?
Here.
And Jonathan Swarick?
Here.
With six members of council present, a quorum is declared.
Thank you, Christina. Would everybody please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As a reminder to everybody that's here tonight, we do live broadcast this meeting and would like to welcome all that are here with us in our council chambers and also all those that are joining us by the live broadcast. If you do get an opportunity to speak tonight as part of the meeting, I'd ask that you use the microphone that's up at the podium over here. The reason for that is those that are listening on the live broadcast can't hear the comments if they're spoken from your seats where you're at today. And if you do get an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that you introduce yourself. If you're a resident, please just state if you're a resident of Fair Oaks Ranch or not. And if you're with an agency here to speak tonight, just which agency you're from. And with that, we'll move on to our citizens to be heard tonight. And just as a reminder, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item which has not been posted on the agenda. And all speakers that speak as part of citizens to be heard, I ask that you keep your comments to less than five minutes. And Mr. Miller, you were the only one that signed up.
Hi, I'm Doug Miller. Been a 20-year resident of Fair Oaks Ranch on Rolling Acres Trail. I'm here to encourage the approval of the second reading of the ordinance for the speed limit reduction on Rolling Acres Trail from 35 to 30. Just one final closing article on the information that was presented at the last meeting. I did receive two additional surveys since the last council meeting to today. So, just in summary, we distributed 98 surveys to the residents of Rolling Acres Trail. Thirty-one have now responded, and 63% were in favor of the reduction as well. So, I encourage you to complete that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank y'all for being here tonight, and thank you for taking the opportunity to make comments. Doug Miller was the only individual that did sign up to speak as part of citizens to be heard. Is there anyone else here tonight that didn't get an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak? All right, then we'll move on to a presentation tonight. And if I could have Ricardo Batista join me up at the podium, please. How about over here? I think I can get you on. So, the state of Texas observes Municipal Court Week each year during the first full week of November. And this year, it will happen on November 3rd through November 7th. And with all the recognitions that we do, what we want to do is heighten the awareness of really of what y'all do because honestly, y'all are over here in separate building, and y'all are so efficient that we just don't hear much about what goes on over here as part of the court. And most residents may not even know that we have a municipal court. That's of course unless you got a ticket, and then you probably are aware of it. But our municipal court team is made up of Judge Daryl Delnick, who can make it tonight. And we have Ricardo Batista with here with me right now, court administrator Maria Panetto, our court clerk. So, thank y'all for taking the time to be with us here tonight. I know you don't have a part in the city council meeting, and you're away from your families, and I appreciate that you took the time to be here so that we can recognize all that you do. Municipal courts typically handle lower-level offenses such as traffic violations, petty theft, disorderly conduct, and other minor infractions. While these may seem like small matters, they can still carry significant consequences such as fines, license suspensions, and possibly even jail time. And throughout the year, our court has officially managed hundreds of cases and maintained compliance with state reporting requirements, enhanced operations and accessibility, and consistently upheld a standard of customer service. And we hold municipal court on the first Thursday of every month. And typically, this room is filled. You'll see 50 to 30 individuals that are coming to appear before the judge. In addition to managing daily operations, I'd like to highlight some of the other things that they have going on. What they have developed, maybe a state requirement, but you developed a youth diversion plan which develop or which identifies high-risk youth and puts a plan in place to protect them or maybe steer them in another direction. And Judge Delnick was recently interviewed by the Texas Bar Journal to discuss his role of municipal courts and to approach and hear his advice on judicial services. But the one that really stood out to me when we were going through this is that November 6th and 7th, they have a community outreach program that they have reached out to Van Robb Elementary. And all of their fifth-grade students are going to come over, split up between two days on the 6th and 7th, and conduct a mock trial here as part of our services. So, very beneficial to them, very instructional. I think it'll be a great time. In fact, I'll probably come over and check it out. During the week of November 3rd through the 7th, I asked that everybody please take the opportunity to reach out to our municipal court team and thank them for all that they do every day to manage our court and keep it seamless. And really, we don't hear much about what y'all do, and that really speaks a lot for what you do every day. So, thank y'all. And I do have a proclamation that I'd like to present for the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, whereas municipal court plays a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas. And whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. And whereas the city of Fair Oaks Ranch has hosted the Fair Oaks Ranch Municipal Court since 1988. And whereas state law authorized the municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the Fair Oaks Ranch Municipal Court is a state court, and it judges, and its judges are members of the state judiciary. And whereas the procedures for the Fair Oaks Ranch Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedures and other laws of the state of Texas. And whereas the city of Fair Oaks Ranch is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and the impartiality of the judiciary. And whereas the Fair Oaks Ranch municipal judges are not policymakers for the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, but are bound by the law and the canons of judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the city council, the city officials, and its employees. And whereas the city council recognizes that the Constitution and the laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Fair Oaks Ranch Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now and therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, Texas, that the week of November 3rd through the 7th, 2025, is hereby recognized as Municipal Court Week and in recognition of the Fair Oaks' fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by our municipal court in the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. So, thank y'all very much. Can we give them a round of applause? And thank y'all again for being here. And with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda for tonight. We have five items on the consent agenda. First is the approval of the December, of the October 2nd, 2025 regular city council meeting minutes. Second, approval of the second reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, amending the city of Fair Oaks Ranch Unified Development Code regarding comprehensive amendments, including various policy and administrative changes. Third, approval of the second reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, Texas, amending the Fair Oaks Ranch Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 12.01, General Provisions, Section 12.01.003, Paragraph 3, by reducing the maximum speed limit on Rolling Acres Trail from Ammon Road to Silver Spur, 230 miles per hour. Fourth, approval of a resolution amending the city's financial management policy, reaffirming the city's investment policy and providing an effective date. And last, approval of councilmember Swarick's absence from the October 2nd, 2025 regular city council meeting. Is there any council member that would like to remove any of these items from consent to consideration? Everybody good? Then could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Removed.
Scott in the second?
Second.
From Emily. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. We have three consideration items on the agenda tonight. First is the consideration and possible action, approving the first reading of an ordinance, amending the city of Fair Oaks Ranch Code of Ordinances, Chapter 3, Building Regulations, Article 3.01, General Provisions, and Section 3.01.018, Driveways Passing Through Drainage Channel to require survey and drainage analysis by a registered and professional engineer. And Lee, I think this falls in your area of expertise.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Lee Muniz. I'm the engineering manager of City Fair Oaks Ranch. I'm here to present the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances, specifically Section 3.01.018, driveways passing through drainage channels. So, this section originally adopted in 2005 establishes the design and construction requirements for developers or homeowners who wish to build driveways that cross a drainage channel. As many of you know, this type of driveway connection is quite common throughout the city. After reviewing this section, staff identified several inconsistencies between the current ordinance and the Unified Development Code and the existing permit application process. To address these discrepancies and improve clarity, staff is recommending several key revisions. The proposed amendments would be requiring a separate permit specifically for driveway construction, require a survey both before and after construction to verify compliance, mandate engineering design plans when culverts are proposed, and lastly, reassign the responsibility of the review and approval of these permits to Public Works Department rather than having the Public Works Department serve as the designer of the said culverts. If approved, these revisions would apply to all driveway construction on uncurbed streets. For curbed streets, driveways typically do not require culverts, and the roadways itself serve as the part of the stonemower conveyance system. So, this concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them as best I can.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
But being that it's new or expanded, does this cover existing residences that just want to replace the exact same thing?
Correct, yes, sir. This would fall along any driveways that are on uncurbed streets, whether they're existing or proposed.
And we've, you and I have talked about this?
Yes, sir.
A pretty good bit.
Mm-hmm.
I talked to a friend of mine who works with a lot of engineers. He said that the $5,000 is kind of what we're thinking it costs to get this done. So, if you have to replace your driveway, you're in for an extra $5,000 to an engineer. He's saying maybe that's a little high. Maybe it's like $200 an hour, with the $2,000 minimum would be feasible. But I'm still not comfortable with it being going back in with the exact same infrastructure, you know? And I still just go back to, you're going to have a lot of instances where there's an 18-inch pipe there. You want to take the pipe up and put a new one because it's corrugated. Maybe it's rusting out, and you don't want to coat it. And then, you know, you're going to put the 18-inch pipe back in. Now, you've got to go pay an engineer $5,000 to go, oh, yeah, what you're doing right there, that's exactly what you need to do. So, good on you, you know? And you're just out $5,000 and not a whole lot to show for it because you're replacing something that wasn't in, it wasn't causing a problem to begin with. You know, there's no history of flooding here. I'm still not okay with it from that standpoint. And, you know, you and I talked about ponds. And, you know, there's already some stuff in the city that works as, you know, you can fix something, but if you want to put something in new, then you have to do something different. And ponds is one of those. So, if you have a pond, you can maintain your pond without having to pull a permit or doing anything or having an engineering survey. But if you want to put in a new pond or change your pond, you know? So, we already kind of do that on some other stuff. That's just the one that you and I talked about. There's probably some others. I think that there might, and you know, even if everybody around us does it, that doesn't mean it's the best way that it can be done all the time, you know? I think that for, did we, you know, I mentioned that I was going to ask, how many driveways have been replaced in Fair Oaks in the past five years? Did we ever find an answer to that definitively?
No. To my knowledge, there hasn't been very many replacement culverts. So, I don't have that information, but I can get that information for you as well.
Could we raise the driveway fee, driveway permit fee for people that are replacing existing and not expanding to cover like an in-house cost of doing this? You know, setting us at half a day or a day or whatever. Once you get the new software in, we don't know how long it's going. This one took a day because it was the first, it was a bear, we had to wrestle with it. And then we had to, you know, go back and forth on it. But could we raise the cost to cover some of that for, you know, existing driveways that don't want to change just to kind of give them a cheaper option rather than having to go to a third party and paying $5,000? Could they just pay us whatever it cost us to do it if we have time? And, you know, tell them even then, you have the option to go and spend $5,000, or you can wait on us, and we should be able to get to it in two to three, four months, whatever, you know? That's one of the thoughts that I had. The other thought was, what if we just standardize and say, if you want to go less than 18 inches or less than 18 inches, you have to, you know, then show us why. Most of the average-sized pipe, it's not going to work for all situations, but I just, I really feel like there's probably a better answer here than to inevitably make every, you know, let's say that 20% of culverts in Fair Oaks are going to be replaced in the next 15 to 20 years. That's a lot of $5,000 price tags, and it feels like I am imposing a tax on people, you know, like a driveway tax or something. It just, I'm not super comfortable with it. But if I need to be comfortable with it, I'm new to this stuff, you know, as you know. So, I'm new to this side of it. So, if there is some, something here that, you know, I can definitely be talked out of my position, but those are my thoughts on it, and that's my question as well.
Yeah, those, we could look into incorporating a different aspect of it if that's something the, I'd have to look to see what sort of fee would work as far as increasing it. But then again, too, that would follow along everybody that applies for a driveway. So, in essence, that fee would be tacked on everybody that would need, may not need or need it because it's tied now to the driveway permit. So, if it's a curb, well, I mean, if it's a curb street, they pull the driveway permit, they're going to pay an increased cost for, yeah.
So, there's no, you know, we have the language in the pond already, right? There's language in our UDC as it details ponds for existing ponds and new or changing ponds. Can we not borrow some of that same language and have it two different fees or two different permits? You know, a permit to replace as is or replace exactly as it was, and then a permit to expand or do a new one?
Usually, we ask for design calculations whenever they're making changes. But maintenance-wise, no. They don't have to do any sort of design calculations unless they're changing the actual pond. As far as permitting, though, we do have in our, we do have in our fee schedule, we have additional engineering services that could be tacked on to permits, and that's maybe something that we could look into. Again, having more standard details for covert design could actually, could be beneficial, and that way, following along those guidelines. But typically, having these design standards, you typically need expertise to do those design standards to ensure that they're following those guidelines.
I agree, and I understand that we've had some issues in the past, and we're trying to cover those. So, I understand both sides.
Primary impetus for proposing this ordinance is largely to get the city out of the business of designing driveways and culverts, just as any permit. We don't design your house or your accessories dwellings or your fences, what have you. We do require permits for those activities, but we don't design them similarly. We, right now, because of the old code that Lee mentioned, that it still states the city will provide the design or the scope of the drainage. That's what we're trying to avoid because, among other things, it conflicts with the new drainage standards that we have specifically in Section 9.7 of the UDC. We do not have that UDC or any of the UDC when that, when this code was originally adopted. So, there's a conflict there. My preference is to really just get out of the business of prescribing a design of any kind. So, what you're offering, councilmember Swarick, is, not saying we couldn't do it, but it'd be a very different tack than what this ordinance proposes because this would, that would, rather than have us get out of the business, we would actually be offering a enhanced or ancillary service in providing that service for residents.
We're already in the business because we do control, and I mean, we've all talked about this. We control the pitch and the elevation that that covert's going to lay in, right? Like, we pick that, we mandate that. The only thing that we don't mandate, which we could theoretically, is the size of the covert itself. You know, so it's hard for us to get out of the business of drainage because it's what we do, you know?
We inspect it, you know, based on the design, but we do not design it.
Yeah.
And the pitch and circle will vary by the location as well.
Yeah, so, and the main thing about that pitch and that slope also, you know, those are variables that we do have control of, but there's also the other variable of the watershed draining to that channel, which is large part of what, what kind of guides that design criteria for that covert.
I get it, and again, I'm here for it on new construction. I'm absolutely sure, absolutely, you know? Developers are going to find a way to recoup that cost, and they're going to spread it out amongst, you know? They're going to have a better rate for an engineer that's doing 30 houses at a time or somebody that's, you know, saved up their money, and they're about to build their house. $5,000 is going to be a nickel in the machine, you know? It's not going to make or break them. But somebody that's looking at repairing their driveway, their covert fails, their driveway needs to be replaced, contractor, you know, they're going through bids, and they say, well, you know, the best one I got is about $12,000, $15,000 here. We're going to add $5,000 on to that person who's trying to figure out, man, this bad thing happened to me, and now it's, you know, 25% worse.
If we were looking at the design of a driveway as what this was really identifying, would a new design be required if they're just replacing the driveway at the same specs that it was initially put in it?
That would depend if there was an engineer designed before they actually, a prior design. And not to mention if that design is still adequate for the current. So, if they have a driveway and they want to replace the driveway, it depends on when that driveway was going in, if it was If it was 30, 40 years ago, then we've updated a lot of information. So more than likely, that would be undersized.
Well, would that then cause people not to fix their culverts that need to be fixed? That, that's, that's the question. I think, I think one of the things that we need to look at is if it's a, we're removing and replacing, right? That, that, those numbers are there kinda thing? And then we're at the end of, at the end of the construction, the, we as the city get stuck with, you know, just inspecting? That's, that's a whole different animal from creating a new driveway. My wife would love to have a circular driveway. I've been fighting her for years on that, you know? But that's a whole different animal from removing and replacing the culvert that's been there for 50 years on my property, kind of thing. So I, and I think, does that sum it up?
What the, what the language says is it would require a separate permit for all new, new or expanded driveways. So it sounds to me like if you're just replacing the same old thing, that's not expanded, right?
At, anytime that it is a driveway for a curbless street, you would have to meet this criteria regardless of its existing or proposed.
Well, that's not what it says. It liter, it says, "Staff recommends amending section 3.01.018 to update the permitting and design requirements." The proposed revisions would require a separate permit for all new or expanded driveways. It doesn't say all driveways of any size.
Correct, any curved, uh, curved driveways don't apply for this section, yeah.
Right, I get it. But if you're do, if it's not expanded, if you're taking a 10-foot driveway and you're replacing it with a 10-foot driveway, same-size culvert, everything? But to me, that doesn't mean expanded. What is expanded then? What's the purpose of that word?
Uh, to my knowledge, this, where, where, is that in the cover page?
That's on page 374 of the packet.
374.
Yeah, it is on the cover page. I would defer to the, the ordinance language itself on, um, what is that, page 378?
76, oh yeah.
Right? That, uh, "The driveway through the city right away shall require a driveway permit and be constructed so as to not obstruct or divert the side street drainage in any way."
I don't, I'm not sure that there's a concern with the permit. But I think it's the requirement to have a design submitted with it, which is where the $5,000 comes from. So, I mean, getting a permit to replace the driveway so that we'll come out and inspect it? I think everybody would agree with that. It's just the requirement to, if I'm doing a repair on the culvert or my driveway and now I'm gonna be required to redesign it before I can get the permit?
Correct, that, not necessarily redesign it, but to ensure that there's adequate capacity with the current sizing of the culvert. So if you do come in there and then you look at it and get, and have an engineer, look at the proposed, provide plans and do that design? And they come back and say, well, before you had, you know, two 12-inch corrugated metal pipes, you actually need about a 24-inch corrugated metal pipe or something equal to that area. And then they would have that design. So it's not, I, I know everybody's thinking like, oh hey, you know, engineer looks at it and says, oh, the design's perfect. Go ahead, you're good to go. But there's gonna be cases where the engineer's gonna say, you're actually undersized. You need more infrastructure to not, to not impact any adjacent residents or have any sort of impacts to infrastructure as well, too.
Primary design cost is in the, the drainage and hydrolog, hydrolog, hy- hydrology.
Hydrology.
Hydrologic analysis, not just the basic design itself. So when we inspect these now, we have a design. Usually it's pretty basic, especially on curb streets. But that, but, but the, the cost, if you will, is in that analysis to determine the, the necessary size. That's, that's, that's where the rub is.
But that's all part of the design process.
Ultimately, yes, but.
Are we aware of current driveways or homeowners where their culverts are so undersized that they're actually diverting excess water or flooding their neighbors' properties is actually a, a problem?
Yeah, I heard one story today that there is an occurrence. Yes, there, there are some situations. And not only, it, it's not only impact to, um, affected residents, but you, you have to remember too, as these culverts are undersized, what happens is water goes around it and that causes erosion, which is also an impact to our drainage infrastructure as well, too. So not only as, if water's conveyed through that channel, then you're not having that water go around and cause that scour, but.
Yeah, and I'm, I agree with, with Jonathan. I, I'm not necessarily comfortable with, with all these costs 'cause, not, I mean, not only is the engineering study, but there's also two surveys. And so in my mind, that was already a couple thousand. And, and I don't know that's, it's a problem enough to where we have to pass that on to every single homeowner who wants a new or redo or driveway or culvert. And I don't know, uh, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. If, if a homeowner is diverting water or flooding neighboring property, I think they're subject to civil liability to that neighboring homeowner. And so why not make a standard, um, culvert size? Leave it up to the homeowner to, to, to do that? And then if it causes problems or there's known issues before they redesign it or there's problems after they do it, then they get tagged by the city and then have to get the engineer and report. And then if, if it, if it doesn't, if it's not adequate, then they have to like redo it. I'd rather have that money required to be spent on the back end when there's actually known problem than requiring everyone to do it on the front end if, if there's not necessarily a problem. If that makes sense?
I agree with you.
Hello? I'm, 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 I agree with Jonathan though on the new stuff. If you're designing it from the get-go, if you're putting in a brand-new culvert, it's all brand-new, you're gonna need the study anyway. So make, it makes sense then, but I totally agree with Ruben on the other part.
I don't know if you need to, I mean, if someone's put in a driveway right now, they don't need a study, do they?
A brand-new one?
Yeah, a brand-new one.
Uh, no.
Yeah, so, and I know you said it's a nickel or drop in the bucket. But if in these, in this day of age, with the prices of homes and loans, 5,000 can be a big difference between having to get a study or, you know, getting appliances. And so I think it would make more sense to have, I, I don't know if, and I don't know if the city has this data to where certain standard-sized culverts, um, might be better equipped in certain sections of the city to where maybe in one section of the city where it's uncurbed, you know, two 18 inches is adequate. But in a different section, you know, maybe a, it'd have to be a bigger standard culvert. I, I don't know if that's, that's a thing, but something else to think about.
Do y'all follow the tech stop manual for, for drainage culverts, those kinds of things? The tech stop prescribes the standard culverts that are used for drainage. But you also need to think about the trucks and the, the vehicles that are crossing those culverts. If they're not up to standards and it fails, how's a fire truck gonna get across? How's an ambulance gonna get across? If the city knows about that because they, they permitted that driveway and then that does fail, there's damage to that vehicle, you could potentially be facing liability. It's pretty much a standard issue, culvert size. You've got an engineer, professional engineer that certifies that it is safe to cross and it's going to withstand the traffic, but also the drainage that's going through there. This is pretty much standard practice. I understand the costs associated with it, but if you allow it to happen and you knew about it, then you could potentially be facing liability.
I get it, but it's.
You provide services, emergency services.
Badly is a fire truck gonna get damaged dropping 10 inches when that 18-inch culvert collapses?
That's million dollars, 1.5 million dollars.
How badly?
Pretty bad. You think they're gonna wanna drive across that, though? If they, if they know about that, that potential liability?
Then they should've gotten the engineering survey. They, they still have the option. We're not saying that residents cannot go get an engineering survey and, and figure out what they wanna put here. I mean.
It is a liability. I guarantee they're not gonna wanna try, they're not going to want to cross that culvert knowing that it's not gonna support their weight.
I think culverts really don't support weight. As long as they're properly installed, it's the dirt around them that kinda supports the weight. The culvert just holds the whole of it.
I understand, but they're also, they're also used as low-water crossings.
Sure.
For drainage channels, standard practice.
Get a little sidetracked now and.
Yeah, they were doing the weave, right? That's what we call them.
It's all of us. Lee, uh, so you mentioned that maybe in the past, that we had culverts put in on uncurbed streets. Who approved those during that timeframe?
Would depend on which, some of these date back before we were even a city, so.
So they were just put in?
They were put in just basically, I mean, from what I've been told is that people, whenever they wanna build a house back in the day, they would just look at the upstream culvert and say like, yeah, they're using a 12-inch, let's use 12-inch 'cause that's what they have next to us. There was no design.
Scott, how much is it put on the city staff? If we were to take the language that was in the, the cover page that says new and improved driveways would require the design requirements and just those that are repaired and repaired at the?
Yeah, we, we discussed this a little bit earlier with staff. It's, I mean, obviously there is a path by which we can effectively exempt or grandfather existing driveways. That is an option, just understanding that whether it's illegal liabilities as a community, we're accepting some level of risk for areas that may or may not be undersized. And we don't know that until it happens. Like, like Lee said, a lot of these were installed a long time ago. The, the, the drainage standards were different. The development pattern was probably very different 20, 30 years ago than it is now. So a lot of things could have changed. So is that, will, will that 18-inch culvert provide the same capacity that it did 20, 30 years ago? You don't know that. We haven't had a, a 10-year storm in a really long time, so. Which is what our local streets are supposed to be designed to. So, so this would, you know, get close to that. But so that is a policy decision ultimately. You can't, you could make that decision as a body. But, but the intent was to, to provide a standard and, like I said, um, prevent the city from designing the, the improvement on behalf of the resident.
Again, I've gotta go back to the, to the concept that my house has been there for 50 years. And if you can't tell me that we're, we're having drainage issues on particular culverts, I'm not convinced that this is really the problem that we're making it out to be. If it's a remove and replace, pay for the permit, we'll go, have the city go out and inspect it, make sure that the drainage is, is correct. But other than that, uh, if, now if we're doing a major drainage project like we've done on the back part of Rolling Acres where we've, we've spent a lot of money having to put three, I think it's three large culverts in, uh, at that one, at the one corner, that's different and that requires engineering. But I'm thinking about all the houses that are along, um, Silver Spur, Meadow Creek Trail. Those culverts have been there for a long time. And if we haven't had, if we're not aware that there are actual drainage issues, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure we're just chasing a problem that doesn't need to be fixed. We can, we can recoup the, the amount of money that we need for inspections. But if it's a remove and replace, eh, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not ready to go there to go ahead and cause the homeowners. We use it, we're batting around the idea of, of $5,000 for an engineer. But we're, if we're then gonna end up with having to redo that work or have hydrology studies and everything else, you know, come on. It's, it's, we're talking a large expense for a very small por, I don't wanna say a small portion of the city, but for a bunch of homeowners that have been out there for a very long time. Thank you.
Just to add, one thing that Lee and I did talk about was Scott's point that it, it may actually stop some homeowners from fixing something that needs to be fixed. And Lee brought up the point that, well, you know what they could do if they had it rusting out at the bottom? They could just do what we did on Vestal and, you know, put concrete in it or they could coat it somehow to, to get some extra life out of it. And that was a good point that you brought up, that, you know, it, it may defer those repairs that might be needed and then become a liability because this didn't get repaired because of this ordinance.
For the record, I don't have a culvert.
For the record, I'm in Rain Tree, so it doesn't apply to me anyway.
Ever been a, a situation where, oh, I'm sorry.
How's that? Where a, uh, street and, uh, the, the drainage by the driveways backed up and overflown the streets or flooded neighbors down the road?
Um, I haven't been around the rain events where that has occurred or even had, um, citizens complain about that occurrence. Uh, I know that there are some areas within the city where they do get, collect a lot of drainage from upstream, uh, roads or, or bargeages. And even, there's even occurrences where private residents have taken measures in their own hands and built a berm just to divert water around. Um, I know that's not necessarily about a driveway, but it is related to that aspect that, you know, sometimes there is, uh, whenever you have a large hill and you have that water streaming down there and then you put an undersized culvert, that streaming water's gonna be diverted somewhere else. So if you had a culvert that size appropriately, then it would flow through the culvert rather than around it.
So historically, it's, it's happened before?
There's been cases of drainage issues to say, so to speak, that they are caused by undersized culverts. It would have to be, have like a full-blown investigation. But I do know that there are some, uh, projects that we currently have on our, um, on our five-year plan that deal with, uh, culvert replacements and also channelization along a rightaway. So there is some problems.
Thank you.
Like I said, if, if there are documented problems or citizens that have complained that their, their neighbors are diverting water 'cause their culverts are undersized, it'd be, require those people to get, you know, uh, an inspection and, and a, and a report if and when they, they need to redo a driveway. But to require everyone to do it, even if they're just fixing their driveway? I, not a, I don't know, I just can't support that.
Well, what do we do? Can we, can we change it a little bit to grandfather in now? Or does it have to come back again or do you?
There are options, yeah. So yeah, you can, you can, obviously, obviously you can make a motion to, to, to approve. You can postpone the item, you can offer an amendment if, if you have one. And with the language or close language, we can incorporate as an amendment to the, the ordinance. That is also an option.
Yeah, I'm not smart enough to write that for you, I'm sorry.
Is there, is there, is there a, a concept that you're, that you would be looking to?
Grandfather in it then, more or less the way that it reads on the, on the agenda, you know? Or on the cover sheet to where if you're gonna put in a new one or change the existing, then yeah, you're gonna need to get a permit, you know?
But i- i- if you wanna expand your driveway two feet, make it two feet wider, you're gonna spend more on a report than you are on the driveway. And so.
Good point.
To, to me, it depends on what, what is expand or what is a redesign. Because if you're not really changing, you know, the, the flow of water is not gonna change. And so if you're just widening it a little bit, then, you know, you're gonna pay a lot more to engineers than you are to fix the actual, or widen your actual driveway.
Good point.
Yeah.
I would say defer it, but I would also say if, if whatever you're doing to your driveway doesn't change the size of the culvert, I mean, if you plan on making it significantly smaller, then maybe that should maybe be required. But if you're not gonna change the size or if you're gonna make it a bigger culvert, then I, I don't see why we would require all of this. Because it's not gonna change any flow of water from what it currently is. And if we aren't aware of any problem currently, then that's just a cost that I feel like is unnecessary.
I think that, Lee mentioned that he had identified a few spots where there were like two 12-inch culverts instead of what should be there. So there could possibly be a reason to have this for. So there could possibly be a reason to have this for an existing driveway. I just, I can't think of what it is, but I understand what he's saying, you know, surely it's out there somewhere. Surely in all of Fair Oaks, somebody's got an undersized culvert, right? Like there, it may be 0.02% of culverts are undersized, but they're probably there. Mine is probably one of them, but again, I'm not in a right-of-way, so.
I'll be honest with you, from what I've seen where culvert, water's going around a culvert, it's a bigger problem. There's no channel that's catching the water.
There's just...
Yeah, there's just, there's no place for the water to go. And that's what's caused, that's what causes the ponding. We had that problem on Meadow Creek Trail before the major reconstruction several years ago, where the water was coming over the road. And the problem wasn't culverts, the problem was there wasn't enough of a drainage ditch that was in there. And at that time, the city came in, the road crews came in and were able to channel the water away. And it was like less than a foot from my front, from my front door because it was coming over the road. And it was not due to culverts, it was due to the fact that there was no drainage ditch. So my, in my experience, which is limited to Meadow Creek Trail, I get it, but it's more of a, it's more of an issue, it's a bigger problem than just somebody with a 18-inch culvert. It's more of control of the water, which we've already been looking at as a council, as a city, on how do we deal with the drainage problems throughout the city. So this is kind of sort of attached to it in my book, but...
How long do you guys want it, how long do you guys want us to postpone it for that would give you adequate enough time to rethink it and kind of think if we can get some of this language in there?
As far as the motion goes, you can, you can move to postpone indefinitely, we can bring it back whenever, but I don't think this would take a long time. What I'm hearing is that you're looking for something that effectively applies to new construction, in so many words. And we can, we can refine that a bit, but I think that's the concept that the council was looking for, just understanding again that the intent of all these standards, which are included in the UDC that we just updated minutes ago, is to provide zoning and use standards to prevent problems rather than apply to them retroactively. So just as, it's my last editorial, understanding that, that we're trying to, we're trying to create standards that align with what Mr. Parker was saying, that gets at the drainage conditions throughout the city, which includes both new and existing properties. That said, we can, we can certainly come back with language that gets to what the council's looking for.
Well, there again, I would say that I'm still okay with, you know, pay us something to do the engineering for you, since we are the ones that are saying, hey, we want to be sure exactly what size culvert you're putting in there is what we agree, you know, what we think it ought to be. I mean, if we're the ones that are gonna dictate it, I mean, it kind of feels like I'm the IRS where I have this magic number that you're supposed to pay. I'm not gonna tell you what it is, but you better come up with the right number, you know? It just, it kind of seems like we could just save a step and we're gonna go out there. I talked to Lee about this. I said, so what's gonna happen is we're gonna have an engineer that tells us it's an 18-inch culvert, right? You know, okay, they got their culvert in there. And then you're gonna go plug in that 18 inches and make sure that that's right for the area, right? You're gonna double-check his work, that engineer's work, right? To some extent, won't take near as long, but it's still gonna be some work to figure out, okay, here's where he got 18 inches, yeah, he did, he did good.
It would be a review to ensure that they meet the minimum standards for the design of that culvert and making sure they comply with all ordinances and design aspects of it. So yes, it would, it would be something similar to that viewpoint for the approval process as it's written in the revision. So not necessarily, it wouldn't be a design aspect where we would start from scratch, because there's a lot of, a lot of different things that go into the design of a culvert and driveway. But I would definitely review the information they provided and ensure that those calculations do meet the proper design aspects of that culvert.
I think you understand the comments and what we were looking for. Did you have anything else to add specifically to this?
So we could review the existing and make sure that it's okay, and at that point say, hey, this is not okay. Right?
Yes, we...
With the same workload as reviewing the engineer?
We have the capability of doing that, but again, this is more along the lines...
The piece that I would like to, if we're gonna go that route, Matt mentioned liability, and so, you know, what liability does that put on the city if we're gonna take that on for existing culverts? You know, so there could be some rework of this. We just need to make sure that we're making a smart decision as we go through this. So I agree postponing it for some amount of time, just so that we can review that and make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Can I say one more thing real quick? If there are minimum requirements, like we just mentioned that they meet minimum requirements, we can put that in the ordinance, that they at least have to meet the minimum requirements.
On a rework? On a, on a remove and replace?
Yeah.
Or, I mean, I would assume that everything that's been in is meeting some sort of minimum currently.
There where it ought to be a 12-inch pipe, then you gotta come up to the 12-inch pipe. But Lee's told, I've asked Lee the same thing. He says, well, it's kind of hard to do because of the contour, and we've looked at the topographic map, and there's just so many, that's a lot of work trying to figure out exactly what pipes go where. I mean, it's basically the...
But I'm talking about from a liability standpoint, to put the language in the ordinance, that it must meet the, whatever, Matt, whatever language you said about text, textod or something, whatever, yeah.
For the fire code, there's a certain minimum standard that has to be met under the fire code.
So it will be, it will meet this whatever minimum standard, and then it's up to the homeowner to figure out how they want to do that.
Back to engineering.
I mean...
We've come full circle.
If it's, if it's replacing, though, if you're just picking up and putting back down, you're, you know, and it's not a problem, that's what I mean. I'm just talking about for new stuff, if we're gonna have this requirement on new things, then Greg said, are we putting any liability on the city? Then for the new things, it's you have to at least meet the minimum requirement, period, no matter what, you have to meet the minimum requirement for whatever your engineer decides, right? You can't have an engineer come out and say, well, right here, you know, 12-inch would be fine, but the minimum requirement's 18. You have to at least meet the minimum in order to avoid liability on the city. For new stuff.
Yeah.
Right? The existing, I'm with you guys on the existing.
And I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'd like to motion that, my motion would be to go ahead and table this until staff can come back to us at such time and provide us with a different...
Excuse me?
Starting right the staff.
Can I, can I interrupt? Instead of tabling, would you consider making a postpone till a certain date? That would be a more appropriate motion?
I wasn't trying to tie staff's hands with a date.
Postpone indefinitely would be better.
Postpone indefinitely.
To a certain date would be better? Because when you say indefinitely, it's almost like killing the item.
I got you.
Actually, you can postpone indefinitely.
April?
Well, let's postpone it till next council meeting, and then if we need to postpone it again, we just postpone it again, right?
Do indefinitely or go out six months?
Even if it killed the item, you can just bring it back to you.
This should not be hard for us. Postpone indefinitely.
Postpone this item indefinitely until such time as we can revisit it.
Second?
Second.
Who was the second?
Ruben. Any other comments from anyone here tonight? Any other further comments from council? With the motion on the table to indefinitely postpone this item, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Postponed. With that, we'll move on to our second consideration item tonight, which is the consideration and possible action, approving a resolution authorizing a free tree giveaway as a mitigation. Four trees removed from the wastewater treatment plant, phase one expansion, and the plant five ground storage tank projects. And Kelsey?
Good evening, staff. My name is Kelsey Delgado. I'm the project manager for the city of Eric's Ranch. Tonight, I bring you a resolution authorizing a tree giveaway as mitigation for trees removed by two city-owned projects, the wastewater treatment plant, phase one expansion, and the plant five ground storage tank. I do not have a presentation as part of this agenda item, however, you may find the resolution on page 381 of your agenda packet. As you may recall, city council conducted a workshop to discuss different options to mitigate the necessary removal of protected and heritage trees by these projects. Of the options presented, city council expressed interest in hosting a free tree giveaway to meet the intent of tree mitigation requirements as outlined by the city's UDC. This would provide a total of 109 3-gallon and 15-gallon trees to our residents. Additionally, 11 15-gallon trees would be provided to the country club for planting on the golf course. While this approach does not meet, or does not achieve a one-to-one trunk circumference replacement ratio, it fulfills the mitigation requirements based off of the total number of replacement trees. The cost of the trees for this giveaway is approximately $5,000, which would be charged to the projects budgeted through the utility fund. And with that, I turn it over to council for their consideration.
Questions from council?
Is, is the 11 trees going to the country club, was that based on the formula, or is that more than they were entitled to based on the formula?
It was based on the formula, so it's, there's one heritage tree on golf course property that is marked to be removed, and so it would be 11 replacement trees to fulfill that mitigation.
How are y'all choosing who gets the trees?
So it is on a first-come, first-served basis. Residents will be able to sign up for this tree, for this giveaway. I believe it will be held as like an online signup with the option where you could call city hall or walk in to reserve a tree as well. Again, first come, first served. And there will be verification of addresses to ensure that they are ranch residents.
The one per household?
It will be one per household.
Are they fun trees, like fruit trees, or like useful trees?
So they are going to be native Texas species. The exact variety is not yet decided because it is pending what the nursery has in stock, but they all will be native species that are drought tolerant, and there will be a variety, so there will be a flowering and at least one flowering and at least one hardwood species.
I like fruit trees.
No fig trees.
Kelsey?
Go ahead.
Is, is there any chance that all of the trees won't be taken or used by the citizens? Have you thought about it from that angle?
So we have thought about that, and at this point, we don't believe that will be an issue. To put it in reference, the city of Bernie actually did their first free tree giveaway last year for Arbor Day. They had, granted, they have a lot larger of a population than they, than we do, they had 60 trees available, and they all were gone within 15 minutes. We're doing 109 trees with a smaller population, but I believe we will have enough resident participation to take all the trees.
Anybody else?
I like it.
Any questions from anyone here tonight? Hey, can I get a motion to approve a resolution authorizing a free tree giveaway as mitigation for trees removed by the wastewater treatment plant, phase one expansion, and plant five ground storage tank projects? Expenditure required funds in providing for an effective date.
No move.
From Jonathan?
Second.
And from Dale. Any other comments from council?
I like fruit trees.
With the motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Kelsey. And congratulations to Kelsey for completing her project manager certification.
Thank you very much.
The third last consideration item that we have tonight is the consideration and possible action to select the candidate for the Texas Municipal League, TML Region 7 Director of the TML Board of Directors. And I'll take this and explain it to council. Previously, there are 16 regions in the Texas Municipal League. Prior, at the TML regional meetings or at the TML conference, they would do the selection of the directors to be part of the TML Board of Directors. And so we're in Region 7, the Alamo or the San Antonio District, and normally that was selected to the TML conferences, but they have now made the determination that needs to be referred back to the cities that are within that region to determine who their representative on the TML board will be. And so that's what we have tonight is to look at that. We do have two candidates that have offered to serve in this position. One is Ed Simics, and the other is Norma Sanchez Stevens. They both appear to be great candidates. They both currently serve on city councils, Ed Simics in Live Oak and Ms. Sanchez Stevens in Sybalo. They both had pretty distinguished careers prior to serving on city council of what they've done in their personal nature. It was really hard to make a determination on which was best. From me, I'm gonna recommend to council that Ed Simics be the individual that we select. He's served on the Live Oak City Council, it may have been off and on, but it's been over the last 20-year period. And he has also served with TML and been on some of their committees and through their training. I just think, from what I've read and gathered, I believe he has more experience to take forward to represent us as part of the TML Board of Directors. Nothing against either of the candidates, just tried to find what would be the best representative for ours. Any questions from council? Any questions from anyone here tonight?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would either of the candidates, then, the selected one is invited to city council meetings and et cetera?
I'm sure we could invite him. I don't know that it's ever been done in the past, but...
Not to my knowledge.
During my time that I've served on council, we have never invited the TML Board of Director for our region to a council meeting.
No, I didn't know that.
Well, Dale, make the motion. Start the tradition.
Hey, can I get a motion to elect Ed Simics to fill the Region 7 Director of the TML Board of Directors?
No move.
From Emily?
Second.
And from Ruben. Any other comments from council? With the motion on the table to elect Ed Simics, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion is approved. All right. With that, we'll move on to our workshop item tonight, which is developing the scope for our strategic plan build. And I'll hand this over to Jim.
Good evening, mayor, council. Jim Williams, Assistant City Manager. So this item is on, it's item number 13 in the agenda packet, starting on page 385. So real quick, bottom line upfront, what I'm looking for guidance on the council tonight is two things. One is what does council involvement look like from a timing standpoint and just general involvement for developing this plan that's gonna be proposed? And then what does council's ideas on community involvement look like? So kind of be thinking about that as I step through these, this slide deck here. So before you, this is a work session on getting started with our strategic action plan update. So real quick history for folks, this is a reminder, and for folks who may not know what's going on. So the current plan was adopted in 2019, and since then, the city has been able to accomplish, using that plan document as a living document, over 100 strategic initiatives. We should be really proud of those accomplishments and how it has advanced the city. We should be really proud of those accomplishments and how it has advanced the city. However, the world has changed since 2019. We had a pandemic. We've had supply chain issues. A whole list of things have changed in our, and what the factors that drove the planning decisions back in 2009 are no longer valid. So the council approved Resolution 2025 dash 25 later, earlier this year, which basically sets out a course to sunset the 2019 plan and to begin the efforts for getting a new plan accomplished. And that's why we're here tonight. So before you, in your packet, you have a proposed scope of work. After this work session is complete and we get council's feedback, Clayton and I will get busy on getting this scope of work inserted into the RFP. We should probably get that out tomorrow or Monday at the latest, based on the feedback we get from council. That's Exhibit A in your packet. Real quick briefing on the proposed scope of work. So we have a couple of main areas. One is the consultant objective. So we are intending to hire a consultant to help us with this work. The four main things that we want the consultant to do is focus on community engagement. That's exactly what that looks like. And that's one of the questions I asked for tonight. What does that look like for the council? And then look at city council alignment. And really specifically, what that looks, what that means is working very closely with city council and making sure that there's a clear understanding on what their priorities are and how we articulate them going into the planning document. And then actually produce a planning document, something that we can use and update and use it in our decision-making as we go forward. And then number four, the fourth objective is how do we as staff sustain this plan and continue to develop it and change it as things change and we get new ideas and new things that are pulling on us and how we adapt to that, train up the staff. So tasks and deliverables for the consultant in the draft scope of work. Again, first off, a project initiation and work plan. That would be one of the first things we do with staff to get the plan going. I'm just looking at my notes here. And then the second thing is really design and facilitate these meetings. What do they look like? Is it town hall meetings? Is it just surveys? Is it polling? Is that a combination of that stuff? How big do they want to be? Those are the kind of things we are looking for. We suggested at least two of those types of meetings. Of course, we can change that and make it one. We can make it three, whatever the council wishes to do because it's your plan. And then city council work sessions. We proposed two in the proposed scope of work. We can do more. We can do less. We can make them bigger. We can make them smaller. It's whatever the council prefers to do. And then, of course, the last deliverable is develop that written plan and get that ready for adoption by the council. So quick timelines. We're planning to plan right now. We're in this phase of it, getting the RFP ready to roll out. We'll start looking at vendors, making those selections, getting contracts kicked out, and then start the kickoff meeting. The bulk of the work and the plan will happen in the month of February, left a week into January, right a week into March. So about a six-week window we're looking at for the bulk of work. And then bring a draft back to council in March and adopt that plan sometime in April, just in time for the budget rollout, so we can roll the plan into the budget planning process and repeat what we've done very successfully in the past. With that, I'm happy to take questions. Go from there.
Questions or comments? Jim, I got a few comments in. I think you have three groups that you're focused on. You have the council, you have the residents, and then you have the staff. And I don't see that staff is included as part of this. And maybe it's just separate as part of what you're dealing with. But I believe there, well, first, I'll cover council. And actually, this was recommended to me. I can't take credit for it. But I think there ought to be an in-brief to council on what a strategic action plan is.
Okay.
I think it's, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure I fully understand.
Okay.
I have an idea what I believe it is. But I think it would be beneficial to have some, doesn't have to be specifically tailored to the city, but just what a strategic action plan does. You know, it links our master plans and fills the void between the five-year planning model. And this really should develop the objectives and tasks that we need to do over a five-year time period, whatever it is. But, you know, and explaining that so people understand it, I think that would be beneficial ahead of time.
I think that's very reasonable, and we can add that to the scope if everybody agrees.
Second piece, so then you have two other reads to council. And so my vision would be is at some point, there would be a development of the strategic action plan. And however that's done with the pillars, priorities, objectives, tasks, whatever it does, I mean, all that developed and then brought to council. Should it be broken out in, you know, the first portion so that at least we're on track and in agreement with council? And then take that back. You know, it may add another meeting to the...
Yeah.
Does that make sense what I'm, instead of just trying to go all the way through it and then you bring a final product back? I don't know. It may add more confusion than if we were to take it step by step. You know, approve the, we have good pillars and priorities, so there may not be much to that. Maybe it's just bringing that back and that gives a foundation to work forward with as part of the strategic action plan. And then ultimately, there, you know, if you have the introduction tells what SAP is, it's really, should there be two meetings in the development? And then finally, one meeting that says, hey, here it is, and here it is for approval? I don't know. What do y'all think as far as needing one or two meetings in the development?
I think it makes sense. That way, there is, that way, if there is any feedback or something that steers it in a different direction, we do that before there's so much work put into it?
Sure, yes. So I'm thinking, so listening to Mayor, you're saying, and Ms. Drew, have two pretty deliberate work sessions with council before we bring even a draft document back or, and build up, each meeting builds on the other one until we're about ready to present a draft. And even at the draft, we still have probably work to do to make sure we understand we're all in alignment, things like that.
I think so.
Okay. Yeah, that's doable.
The second one then is staff. And I don't know that you have any meetings in there related to staff, or maybe they're just not outlined. But almost the same process. And if you're going to do this with the directorates or your higher-level staff, you know, really, my thoughts are, is a lot of what would go into the SAP is probably coming from the staff. And I don't know, are they included as part of work sessions or?
Yes, sir. The staff is absolutely a critical component to developing this plan. So we can by all means be world deliberate in how we put that in the scope of work.
Okay.
Yeah. That would, not in a million years, think of excluding that, no. Yeah, it's pretty critical.
And then the last was residents. So I think you have two pieces here. One, maybe there's, because we had two engagements, is that right? Is what you laid out here for residents?
At least, at least two, yeah.
And so I could see a final one, definitely where the strategic action plan is in its final stages or stage, and we want to present it to the residents. So I would say that would be one. So backing off of there, where is the point that resident input would be valuable to the development of the strategic action plan? So it's probably not in the very beginning where you just open it up and go, hey, I mean, here's our pillars, priorities, you know? What are your comments? I think there had to be some structure already established to it so that residents would understand and we give value back in input.
I would, I would say before, like if we're going to break it out and have two council sessions or whatever, I would say before that. So then when we do have the council sessions, we can say, you know, last week at the town hall, this is, you know, the feedback that we were getting from the residents regarding this part of the plan. And that way, we have that information when we're considering, you know, that part. And then we can make decisions fully educated on what everybody thinks.
I agree with that. It could be, and I would rely a lot on the proposals we get and the final selection that, you know, we make as a group. But I think it does make a lot of sense for a forum or town hall or a citizen group to have essentially a visioning exercise that guides the development of the plan. What are your hopes, aspirations, visions, problems? That can help identify, if not the goal, certainly the priorities in our current vernacular, which feed into the project, et cetera. So I think that makes a lot of sense.
Have buy-in early on?
Yes.
And make sure that everybody understands what the intent of it is, what we're doing.
Anybody disagree with the comments that I put out or have a different way of looking at it? I mean, I'm open. Just want to make sure we're doing the right thing. Okay? Jim, do we?
I just wanted to make sure I heard that right. So engage, citizen engagement piece early on is kind of the high level, what's working well for us, what's not working well for us, kind of high-level visioning, work with council stakeholders, kind of get a draft plan together, come back to the residents and say, what do you think? And then bring that back to council with...
No.
No? Okay, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so I think the thought process was we're going to have basically three phases. We'll have like Phase One, where we get part of it done. Phase Two, where we get another part of it done. And then Phase Three, where we have kind of a final draft. So before each one of those phases, before they come to council, have the citizen input session, whether it's town hall or whatever we want to do. So...
Okay.
That's what I was thinking in my brain.
I don't know that we need three. If we identify three requirements to meet with citizens, but I could definitely see upfront, maybe it's between Phase One and Phase Two, how you were describing it. We develop some structure of what we need to an SAP so that we can present it to residents and get the feedback that both of y'all were talking about. You know, what's important, what are the priorities, what are the things we need to focus on? I agree with that. And then a great point Emily made is that towards the end, I guess, when we're 95, 99% there, to have a town hall meeting and really present it to the residents to get their feedback and any adjustments that we need to make before it comes to council for approval. Is that...
I was thinking more like a couple of town halls, but that'll work.
Well, it's what, you know, what do we want to gain out of the town halls? I guess if we look at it and we see there's value in having multiple town halls to the development.
I'm good with whatever you guys think. I mean, it's hard for me to imagine in my brain without knowing anything about what's going to...
Sure. And the whole point is we're going to pay someone to help us with this process. But I think, but the point is for the scope is we want a, we want an early engagement, a pre-development process with residents, if we will, and some quality check towards the end of the process before final approval. And I think within those constraints, we can, we can scope that and have the proposers craft their proposals accordingly.
Yeah, just also to Scott's point too, a time window, and the more we throw into that time window, we might need to expand that time window out. So we just kind of plan that.
And it may not be all town halls. We could probably use a mixture of town halls and then surveys, some type of thing.
Yeah, open houses.
That's a good point.
Just different methods, yeah.
Other possibilities?
Okay. Everybody good? You got what you needed?
I got what I needed, Mayor. Thank you.
Any questions from anyone here tonight? Reference the process. Okay. Thanks, Jim. And then we have one last report. This is pretty exciting. The FY 2526 Budget In-Brief.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council. Summer Fleming.
Y'all just keep raising the bar?
Well, kind of. No, we're just trying to make it easier for residents. But it is the Budget In-Brief. So the annual budget book is a great resource, but it is long and detailed. So this new report gives residents a simple, easy way to see the budget highlights, where money comes from, how it's spent, and what it's achieving for the community. The Budget In-Brief is modeled after the PAFR, which is a summary of the annual comprehensive financial report. So this report starts with the statistics section and the city's vision, mission, and goals. It explains the budget development process and budget highlights. It has dedicated pages for the general fund revenues and expenditures. And it also showcases major capital and strategic projects, equipment purchases, and a summary of the utility budget. So there is no award tied to this report as with our other financial reports. We just believe it's something that would be valuable for our residents. The goal is to help people quickly understand the city's priorities and spending without needing to flip through the 162-page budget book. So we'll have this posted on our website with the full budget book. But I am proud of how it turned out, and I want to recognize Julie Lovelace for creating this new document. That's all I have.
Any questions from council? I had a chance to read through it today. I thought it was excellent. And it's, I agree, it's a shorter version, a bridge version of what we have as part of the budget. But it's also very informative and written in a manner that's easy to understand for somebody that may not understand the whole budget process.
Right. So if a resident does go out to the website looking for the budget, this will be there, the Budget In-Brief. They could find their answers in this document. But then they'll have the full budget book that they can also scroll through each department and all the details. Thank you.
Any questions from anyone here tonight? Well, thanks, Summer, and thanks, Julie, for all the effort that y'all continue to make our finance department more and more professional in what y'all do. So thanks. And that completes all the items that we had on the agenda tonight. Do any council members have any announcements that they'd like to make?
I don't have an announcement. I have a comment that I wasn't here for the unveiling of our Gateway feature. And that came out really well, very impressive to everybody that was involved in that process. When do the lights get turned on?
Obviously, as soon as we get power.
Okay.
I think the leg's already been run to the power pole. We're just waiting for CPS to connect it.
So really came out very nice. So good job, everybody was involved.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Emily, Ruben? I got a couple of quick announcements. Fair Oaks Ranch Police Department will conduct trunk or treat on the 25th of October. It'll be 6:00 PM, and it'll be right here in the parking lot of the Fair Oaks Ranch Elementary School. I think it'll be, it's been a great time every year. A lot of the police officers and families come up to join as part of it. You know, dress everybody in their favorite costume, come up. And this year, new, we have a dog or pet dressing contest. And there will be prizes awarded. So dress your pets up. All right. Come join us, 25th of October, 6:00 PM, in the Fair Oaks Ranch Elementary School parking lot. Second announcement, November 4th, election is approaching. For Texas voters, well, for all of us, seven, there are 17 proposed amendments to the state constitution that'll be on the ballot. Respective counties may also have items on the ballot. And then for those of us that live in the Bernie School Independent School District, we'll be voting on the voter approval tax rate election. Early voting will start on Monday, runs the October 20th through the 31st. And November, or correction, October 24th is the last date to submit a ballot by mail. In this election, the election is run by the counties. And so whatever county you live in, check the election website of that county to determine where you vote at. Bear County residents will be able to vote right here in this room. But Kendall and Kamel will have to determine where their voting locations are. And last announcement, the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Oak Will program is now accepting applications for the FY 2526. And this program assists residents in combating the spread of oak wilt. If you have questions about how to submit it or the information related to the program, please call City Hall. They'll get you to Ithaca or Kelsey. They can explain the specifics on the program. But we are accepting applications on that now. Scott, that's all I got. Any other big announcements?
I think you covered it.
And from council, are there items that y'all would like added to a future agenda? We have our postponed item, but other than that... We have our postponed item, but other than that...
Dale, you want to invite that guy? You're going to invite the, the TML guy?
No.
Come on.
Well, and also, right, that's our vote. Other people get to vote too, so we'll see who, who ends up being our Region Seven Director. Ruben, Emily, anything else? No executive session tonight? And Christine, anything we missed or anything we need to add?
No, sir.
We're good? And Scott, anything from your point?
Sir?
All good. Christine, the time now is 7:55, and we are adjourned.